We're going to call or order the January 11th, 2021, meeting of Plymouth Township Council. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, the God, the visible, liberty, justice for all.
Okay, thank you, everybody. Just a reminder for tonight, for any, at any moments for audience participation. If you click on the Participants icon on the bottom of your screen, the Participants list will show up on the right. And there is a Raise Hand button on the bottom. So when we ask for any audience or public comments or questions, if you kindly use that Raise Hand feature, and we'll try to call on everybody as best we can in the order in which we see them. And we just ask for your patience with that. With that being said, is there any public comment just on the agenda itself this evening? Seeing none, move down to an announcement that an executive session was held on January 4th, 2001. And at this time, I'll ask for a motion to approve the minutes for the workshop meeting held on December 7th, 2020, and the minutes for the regular meeting held on December 14th, 2020. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Moving down to approval of departmental reports and bills, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins, comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Going down to administration, we have three tax settlements tonight. So we're going to hand those over to Mr. Clark. First one is a tax settlement for AEKI Plymouth LP. Mr. Clark?
Thank you, Mr. Monero. The first one, as you indicated, is for PR AEKI Plymouth LP. They are the owner of a property located at 498 West Germantown Pike in Plymouth Township. In 2015, the Colonial School District filed an appeal to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment Appeals. At the time, the property was assessed at $4,868,900. The matter has been recommended for a settlement by the school district. And effective January 1st of 2016, the property will remain at its original assessment. For January 1st, 2017, the property assessment will be increased to $6,619,800. For 2018, it shall be increased to $8,115,000. For 2019, it will remain at $8,144,000. For 2020, it will be increased to $8,381,000. And for 2021, and for all subsequent years, it will remain at $8,381,000 unless the property is appealed at a later date. Due to the increase in assessment, there was an underpayment of taxes to the township in the amount of $25,715.99. If council approves this settlement this evening, the township will issue a new tax bill in that amount to the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion from council to approve this tax settlement?
So moved.
A motion from Mr. Higgins, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblett, comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Mr. Clark, next one is a tax settlement for Pico and ESS Presa LLC.
That's correct, Mr. Monero. The property owner is Pico and ESS Presa LLC is the tenant of a property located at 1198 Belvoir Road in Plymouth Township. This appeal involves two separate tax parcel numbers. In 2015, the Colonial School District appealed the assessment. At the time, the assessment on the one parcel was $2,787,710, and the assessment on the other parcel was zero. The... This school district is recommending settling this matter, and effective January 1st of 2016, the one parcel shall be increased to $5,620,000. The other parcel will remain at zero. For 2017, the one parcel shall remain at $5,620,000, and the other shall remain at zero. For 2018, it will be, the one parcel will be increased to $5,951,000. The other parcel will remain at zero. For 2019, the one parcel will remain at $5,951,000, and the other parcel will remain at zero. For 2020, the one parcel will be increased to $6,409,000, and the other shall remain at zero. And for 2021, and for all years moving forward, the property, one parcel shall be increased to $6,566,000, and the other will remain at zero. Based on this reassessment of the property, there has been an underpayment of taxes to the township, and Plymouth is owed $33,772.63. And again, if council approves this settlement tonight, the township will issue a new tax bill to the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this tax settlement?
So moved.
Motion for Mr. Gannon, second from Ms. Bandish, any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. And Mr. Clark, our final, third and final tax settlement is for Luke Oil, and back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. The property is located at 199 West Germantown Pike and is owned by Luke Oil North America LLC. The property's current assessment is $583,820. The property was appealed to the Montgomery County Board of Assessment in 2016. The parties have agreed to settle this matter. The 2017 assessment, the property will be decreased from $583,820 to $384,290, and it will remain at that figure for tax years 2018, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Based on this proposed settlement, there was an overpayment to the township in the amount of $1,731.91. If council were to approve this settlement this evening, that amount would be refunded to the taxpayer.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins, comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Moving down to police and public safety, our first item tonight is this final consideration for the marijuana ordinance. And I guess I'm going to ask Mr. Clark to read that, but I, and I know that we have discussed this for the last several months, but if I could just ask either, probably Chief Merciadis, if he wouldn't mind, I know he's in a different setting, or Mike, if somebody could just give us sort of a quick overview of what this changes and what it doesn't change, and then we'll have the, as sort of a reminder for everybody, and then we'll have the ordinance read.
I'll defer to the chief, or if he would like me to handle it, I'm happy to do that.
He is muted.
Thank you, thank you, John. Sorry to put you on the spot, but...
Oh, not at all. Some of the things about this marijuana ordinance, the reason it came to be, or at least the reason that we proposed it, was to give our officers an alternative to criminal arrests. We felt that moving with the times and listening to the community, that even the state is moving toward, not quite a decriminalization, but a different view of marijuana usage. So this ordinance allows us, when necessary, to cite people with a noncriminal citation for use of marijuana. And when we say for use of marijuana, a small amount is defined in the crimes code, which is less than 30 grams of marijuana. Also for having drug paraphernalia, for having possession of marijuana, or for smoking marijuana. The one thing that we wanted to stay consistent with was keeping away from our schools, especially since Plymouth Township has a middle school and grade schools. We didn't feel it was appropriate to decriminalize in areas like that.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate that. And I will turn it back over to Mr. Clark to read the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. This is an ordinance authorizing an amendment to the Code of Ordinances at Chapter 14, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, to create Article 9, possession of a small amount of marijuana. The Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, does hereby enact and ordain that the Code of Ordinances of the Township of Plymouth, Pennsylvania is hereby amended as follows. Section 1 by amending Chapter 14, Offenses and Miscellaneous Provisions, to create Article 9, possession of a small amount of marijuana as follows. Section 14-110 is the definition section. It includes a definition of marijuana, drug paraphernalia, private property used to accommodate the public, public place, public right-of-way, small amount of marijuana, and smoking. Section 14-111 is the important section of this change. It deals with the possession of a small amount of marijuana. And so long as marijuana shall be listed as a controlled substance in the Controlled Substance Drug Device and Cosmetic Act, no person shall be in possession of a small amount of marijuana as defined in said act. Section 2 says the following shall be a summary violation of this part. Possessing a small amount of marijuana as herein defined, possessing paraphernalia used to smoke marijuana. Section C is smoking a small amount of marijuana as herein defined in a public place or private property used to accommodate the public place. Section 3 indicates that persons who are in violation of this section may be issued a non-traffic citation by the police or other authorized law enforcement officer. Alternatively, the officer may obtain the subject's name and address, and later send a non-traffic citation through the Magisterial District Judge's Office. Section 4 deals essentially with what can happen when the person involved in this matter is under the age of 18, and it indicates what our police can do from detaining the minor, to advising the parent or guardian of the minor, to issuing a non-traffic citation. The penalties for the violation for anyone who is found to be in possession of a small amount of marijuana will be subject to a fine of $25 for each violation. Anyone who is found to be in possession of a small, excuse me, of paraphernalia will be subject to a fine of $25 for each violation. And anyone who is smoking a small amount of marijuana in a public place or private property used to accommodate the public will be subject to a fine of $100 for each violation. Enforcement of this section shall be a non-traffic citation issued under this chapter, shall be enforced in accordance with the procedures established by the Plymouth Township Police Department for enforcement of summary violations. And this chapter shall not be construed to supersede any existing Pennsylvania or federal law. Plymouth Township Police Department officers retain the authority to enforce any applicable laws, ordained and enacted by the Council of Plymouth Township, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, this 11th day of January 2021. Council of Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Monero, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion from council to approve this final consideration of the marijuana ordinance?
So moved. Sorry, Marty.
The motion from Ms. Bramblett, and a second from Mr. Higgins. Any comments or questions from council?
I would just like to repeat what Mr. Higgins has said previously, that this gives our township police the discretion to treat this as a summary offense, which means that young people, teens who are trying this out, you know, young people in their early twenties, are not going to be saddled with a criminal violation, that they have to report on future job applications or college applications, and it can really, you know, keep from hindering their advancement. So I really think it's a great idea, and I commend our Chief of Police for bringing this to our attention and championing it.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Anything else from council? Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. And moving down, still with police and public safety, tonight we have a commendation for Officer Watts and K-9 Major, and that one is going to go to Ms. Bramblett.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Commendation of merit. Whereas on December 13th, 2020, K-9 Officer Michael Watts observed via video surveillance two male subjects acting suspiciously in an industrial area off of Concha Hocken Road where recent burglaries had taken place. And whereas Officer Michael Watts, his K-9 partner, Major, and other Plymouth Township officers immediately responded to the area and initiated a K-9 track in an effort to locate and investigate the suspicious subjects. And whereas Officer Michael Watts and K-9 Major located the two males committing a burglary on the property of 1060 Concha Hocken Road, and whereas the males began to flee the scene of the burglary while ignoring commands to stop. And whereas Officer Michael Watts released K-9 Major and was able to apprehend one of the male subjects involved in a series of burglaries. Now therefore be it resolved that Officer Michael Watts and K-9 Major be publicly commended for their intelligent and valuable police service in which they demonstrated faithfulness and perseverance, and that they, their determined actions likely prevented the loss of property by the business and other businesses in Plymouth Township. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this commendation be publicly tendered to Officer Michael Watts and K-9 Major. Adopted this 11th day of January 2021, Plymouth Township Council by Christopher G. Monero, Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Bramblett. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion from Ms. Bandish, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins. Any additional comments or questions from council? Any comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Thank you, Officer Watts and K-9 Major for your outstanding service to our community.
Thank you, Council.
We would clap, I guess, if we were in person, so we should.
And we'd be shaking your hand.
Pictures.
Pictures, yes. Sorry it has to be done this way. And we'll soon learn that they did all of this right, right before retirement. So that's really commendable, K-9 Major, that you stuck with it.
Okay, and our next, our next item in the agenda is a retirement resolution for K-9 Major and Ms. Bandish.
Just so, to make it a little bit more special, a member of my family has joined in to read this resolution. Whereas on January 1st, 2021, K-9 Major retired from the Plymouth Township Police Department with 11 years of service after joining the department in January of 2010. And whereas K-9 Major and his handler, Officer Michael Watts, served the residents of Plymouth Township and the entire southeastern Pennsylvania region faithfully and professionally. And whereas K-9 Major and Officer Michael Watts were members of the U.S. Homeland Security Explosions Detection Force, the task force serving the southeastern Pennsylvania region. And whereas K-9 Major and Officer Michael Watts were certified in the detection of explosives, as well as patrol duties, including criminal apprehension and tracking. And whereas K-9 Major and Officer Michael Watts made another criminal apprehension of a burglary suspect as recently as December 13th, 2020, just weeks before his retirement. Now therefore be it resolved that best wishes be extended to K-9 Major for a well-deserved and happy retirement. Be it further resolved that this resolution be entered on the official minutes of Plymouth Township, and that a copy of this resolution be publicly tendered to K-9 Major and Officer Michael Watts. It was adopted this 11th day of January 2021 by Plymouth Township Council, Christopher G. Monero, Chairman. And Stasi sends his best congratulations.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
A motion from Ms. Bramblett, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Higgins. Any additional comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Congratulations, Major, on your retirement. And I'm not sure if Officer Watts or Chief, if you guys wanted to add anything, or say any words not to put you on the spot, but if you wanted to.
Thank you, Council. He's served very well. I know he's enjoying his life so far. He's had a great career. I know he's definitely surpassed a lot of people in this town, including my own. I know that, you know... Yeah, he's, he's been my partner for almost seven years now, and I'm just thankful to have him out there on the street watching my back. And we appreciate the resolution tonight, so thank you.
Thank you. And I don't know, in my years on council, I don't know if I've ever had one, one subject or one person be the subject of three consecutive items on the agenda, but we do have one more item on the agenda for K-9 Major, and that is a bill of sale. And that one's going to be read by Mr. Gannon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Know all men by these presents that Plymouth Township, a home rule municipality, warrant in consideration of the sum of $1 to seller in hand paid by Michael B. Watts in cash, and before the sealing and delivery of these presents, the receipt whereof is hereby acknowledged, has granted, bargained, sold, and delivered. And by these presents does grant, bargain, sell, and deliver unto said buyer his personal representatives, heirs, successors, and assigns, all in singular, that certain dog named Major. Buyer agrees that he shall purchase and acquire title to Major in its as-is condition, and the buyer acknowledges that seller makes no express warranties or implied warranties of merchantability or fitness for a particular purpose. Buyer agrees that seller maintains a veterinary medicine plan for Major through Penn Veterinary Medicine that expires in June 30th, 2021. The plan covers all exam fees, medical supplies such as flea or tick, and heartworm preventatives, supplies during wellness evaluations, and any procedure that will total under $3,000. Any costs above $3,000, the buyer shall be liable for the total amount, with a 25% discount applied to the complete bill amount. While inpatient pharmaceutical needs for Major are covered by the plan's annual rate, over-the-counter drugs and medical supplies once Major is discharged, as well as post-examination pharmaceutical needs are charged at full retail price with a 25% discount, and buyer shall be responsible for those costs. Post-examination pharmaceutical needs shall be those over-the-counter drugs requested outside of a visit or after a surgical procedure. To have and to hold the said Major unto the said buyer his personal representatives, heirs, successors, and assigns to and for their own proper use, benefit, and behoove forever. And the said seller, its successors, and assigns, does unto the said buyer his heirs, executors, administrators, successors, and assigns from and against all persons whomsoever shall and will warrant and forever depend by these presents. And the buyer by his acceptance of Major does hereby agree to release and discharge seller and its appointed and elected officials, employees, agents, and other representatives and their heirs, executors, administrators, successors, and assigns from any and all claims, causes of action, suits, deaths, and/or damages arising from any and all personal injuries and/or property damages sustained by the buyer and caused by Major from and after the date of this bill of sale. And the buyer by his acceptance of Major does hereby agree to indemnify and hold harmless seller its elected and appointed officials and employees against any claim or award of damages or costs, including court costs and attorney fees, made against the seller by reason of any damages, including personal injuries and property damages, caused by Major from and after the date of this bill of sale. And witness whereof, we have hereunto set our hands and seals the 11th day of January 2021. And I make the motion that we accept this.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gannon. There's a motion for Mr. Gannon to accept the bill of sale for K-9 Major to Officer Watts. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish, any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblett?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the Chair votes in favor. Chief, anything else for police and public safety?
No, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving down to Public Works and Sewer, we have our snow announcement. Mr. Higgins?
Thank you. It's time to start thinking about snow. Residents are reminded that it is unlawful to park or abandon any motor vehicle on any public street or highway in Plymouth Township at any time within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more has occurred, or off-street parking exists. On-street parking where necessary will be permitted only on one side of the street. An even-numbered years parking will be permitted only on the even-numbered side of the street. An odd-numbered years parking will permit it only on the odd-numbered side of the street. This will allow streets to be cleared properly. Vehicles parked otherwise will be subject to removal at the owner's expense. Any motor vehicle parked stalled and capable of moving under its own power or left unattended upon any public street or highway in the township at any time within 12 hours after a snowfall of three inches or more has occurred may be removed or towed to another location by Plymouth Police Department. Property owners are required to clear a path, one sidewalk, so not less than 30 inches within 36 hours after the snow has ceased falling. In addition, residents are asked to adopt a hydrant. If there is a fire hydrant by your home, you know where it is. If obscured by snow, fire companies responding to emergencies may not. Clearing the snow will help protect you and your neighbors.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. And moving down to Liquid Fuels Authorized Expenditure Resolution, that's Ms. Bramblett.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Whereas this is a liquid fuel, liquid fuels resolution, whereas Plymouth Township receives an allocation of liquid fuel taxes from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. And whereas Act one fourteen of nineteen ninety eight as amended by Act two thousand four dash one three eight establishes the authorized expenditure of liquid fuel taxes by municipalities. Now therefore be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby authorize the expenditure of the township allocation of liquid fuel taxes from the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation as follows. To be expended by the authorities of the respective municipality for the maintenance, repair, construction or reconstruction of such public roads or streets, including bridges, culverts and drainage structures for which they are legally responsible and including the lining of streams incidental to the drainage of highways. And for the maintenance, repair, construction or reconstruction of curb ramps from a road, street or highway to provide for access by individuals with disabilities consistent with federal and state law. Two, for the acquisition, maintenance, repair and operation of street signs, traffic signs and traffic signal control systems. Three, for the maintenance, repair, construction or reconstruction of alleys, ways and courts for which they are legally responsible. Where road, bridge, alleyway or court work is performed by the political subdivision, the monies herein allocated may be used only for labor, hiring of equipment, payrolls, purchase of material, including repair parts necessary for the maintenance of equipment, small tools, road drags and snow fences. And in addition, an amount not to exceed twenty percent of the total annual allocation received by each municipality may be used for the purchase of road machinery and road equipment. And four, for the acquisition of computer related hardware, software and training required for the electronic processing of information concerning the funds appropriated and allocated on this act, including the preparation and electronic submission of the required annual reports for payment certification, provided that expenditures under this sub clause may not exceed one thousand dollars annually. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on this eleventh day of January twenty twenty one by Plymouth Township, Christopher G. Monero Chairman, I make a motion that council adopt this resolution.
A motion from Ms. Bramblet. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? None. We'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblet?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down, engineering. Anything for engineering tonight, Mr. Manai?
He's muted.
I'm muted.
Mr. Chairman, I have nothing under engineering, but when we get down further on the agenda on section five point four, the waiver request, I could talk about that if there's any questions on that topic.
Sure, thank you. Okay, then going to subdivision and land development for plans that are currently under review. We have approving grounds fields six through eight extension. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Paul Tornetta in reference to the above mentioned proving grounds. They're asking for an extension for the deadline in council until February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. Make a motion that we approve this.
Okay, a motion for Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblet. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblet?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Down to conditionally approved projects not yet recorded, we have an extension request for eight hundred eight twenty Brook Road. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Randy Wolf in reference to the parcel at eight hundred eight twenty Brook Road. And they are asking for an extension of their application until February twenty eighth, twenty twenty one. I make a motion to approve this.
Mr. Gannon, is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bandish. Comments or questions from council? Comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon? In favor. Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblet?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. And down to projects currently under construction, we have none. Requests for grading permits in advance of recordation. We have two items here. First is proving grounds. Mr. Gannon?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This communication is from Paul Tornetta also in reference to the proving grounds again. Please accept this letter or request for the township to consider and approve a grading permit at the January eleventh, twenty twenty one council meeting. Been trying to be, to be good corporate partners with the township and have been working with all parties in good faith to extend a new eight inch water main from Brook Road to Concha Hockam Road. However, with the closing of Montgomery Chemicals, it seems the momentum was lost. While we pledged to continue this effort, time is now running out and we now need to at least start grading work to meet our summer commitments with contracted tournaments. Accordingly, we have hereby requested a grading permit to be issued at the January meeting, even if our land development approval is not ready to be acted upon and before planned recordation. We will post any and all escrows required by the township. Thank you of its consideration. And I make a motion that we approve this.
Motion for Mr. Gannon. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Ms. Bramblet. Comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblet?
In favor.
Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item for request is eleven oh three Ridge Partners LLC, and that one's going to go to Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Monero. Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby amend Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty two with which Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty two memorialized the township's approval of the preliminary land development plan and consolidation plans titled one one oh three dash one 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 three Ridge Pike redevelopment prepared for one one oh three Ridge Partners LLC, the owner and developer prepared by Nave Newell dated May twenty eighth, twenty twenty, last revised July twenty seventh, twenty twenty, consisting of sheets numbers one through forty two proposing to redevelop attractive land at one one oh three dash one 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 three Ridge Pike Land Development Application number twenty dash four in accordance with said plans to revise condition number eight to read as follows. That the owner developer shall obtain all required permits and approvals from the sewer authority, a DEP sewage facility planning module waiver, the water company with jurisdiction over the property and a highway occupancy permit from Plymouth Township and a highway occupancy permit from Montgomery County. Provided however, that should the owner developer elect to record the plans and or proceed with construction prior to the issuance of the county HOP, owner developer shall proceed at its own risk. Except as amended hereby, all terms and conditions of Resolution twenty twenty dash thirty two remain in force and effect duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the eleventh day of January twenty twenty one Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Monero Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this resolution? Motion from Ms. Bramblet and a second from Ms. Bandish. Any comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we'll do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblet?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
In favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Next item is a waiver request for five twenty nine Plymouth Road, and that one goes back to you, Mr. Clark.
Be it resolved that Plymouth Township Council does hereby waive the land development approval requirements for the development at the property located at five twenty nine Plymouth Road as depicted on a plan prepared by Protract Engineering dated November twenty fourth, twenty twenty. On behalf of property owners Almir A. Pereira and Gilherm B. Capellini collectively as the owner developer, subject to the following conditions. One, that the owner developer shall prepare revisions to the plan to comply with the requirements comments set forth in the December fourteenth, twenty twenty report of Woodrow and Associates, the township engineer, attached to this resolution to the satisfaction and approval of the said township engineer. Two, that the owner developer shall pay all applicable fees and assessments, including but not limited to the following. A, the park or recreational facilities fee under ordinance number one one seven zero of nineteen ninety five as amended in the amount of five thousand sixty five dollars and forty cents based on a three thousand two hundred and sixty eight square foot building addition. B, the sanitary and storm sewer outfalls fee in the amount of two thousand dollars based on twenty new parking spaces. C, the impact fee for transportation capital improvements under ordinance number fourteen twenty six of two thousand and four as amended, said impact fee to be determined by Carol Engineering Corporation. D, the sewer connection fee in accordance with the connection fee and EDU schedule in effect at the time of the application for connection and payment. Three, prior to issuance of any permits, all outstanding legal, engineering and administrative fees applicable to this development must be paid by the owner developer. Four, this approval is subject to the fulfillment of all the foregoing conditions in their entirety, and no permit shall be issued nor shall any development take place on the property unless and until all such conditions are fulfilled. Duly presented and adopted by Plymouth Township Council at a public meeting held on the eleventh day of January twenty twenty one Plymouth Township by Christopher G. Monero Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion to approve this waiver request for five twenty nine Plymouth Road?
I make a motion.
Motion from Mr. Higgins. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Gannon. Comments or questions from council or Mr. Manai, if there's anything you wanted to add at this point?
Oh, yes, if I could. I believe there are some stormwater management control devices on this property that should be legalized somehow, and maybe the solicitor can reference that or amend his resolution to include the stormwater management agreements that are going to be necessary for the project. That's it.
Is that? Mr. Clark, is that, is that a, is that doable?
Um, could I ask Lonnie, are they anything in addition to what's in the the letter from Woodrow and Associates dated December fourteenth?
No, they're included in that letter, yes.
Oh, okay. So then this is, that already includes revising the plans to comply with those comments.
Okay.
And your, your, your letter is of December fourteenth is, is referenced in the resolution, so it's included and all your comments are included.
Very good.
Okay.
Thank you. Any additional comments or questions from council? And comments or questions from the audience? Seeing none, we will do a roll call vote. Mr. Gannon?
In favor.
Ms. Bandish?
In favor.
Ms. Bramblet?
In favor.
Mr. Higgins?
Favor.
And the chair votes in favor. Moving down to zoning, zoning hearings. Mr. Higgins?
This is a public hearing. The zoning hearing board of Plymouth Township hearing on January twenty twenty one will be held at six P M virtually by way of Zoom. Login details will be available at www dot Plymouth Township dot org and the township Facebook account prior to the hearing. Can you still hear me?
Yep.
Yeah.
I lost my video presentation. The following application will be heard Timothy O'Brien on an application for a variance from Plymouth Township zoning ordinance number three four two as amended, Article six, section six up to C one. The variance requested is as follows. To allow an aggregate side yard setback of twenty three feet where a minimum of thirty five feet is required, to allow side yard setback of five feet, six inches where a minimum of fifteen feet is required. The property is located at one one seven Valley Creek Road in a B residential zoning district. Persons with a disability who wish to participate in the public hearing and require an auxiliary aid service or other accommodation to participate in the hearing should contact Plymouth Township at six one zero two three three oh five five four. Plymouth Township Hearing Board, David Conroy, zoning officer.
And a reminder that we'll also have at that zoning meeting the continuation of the pre zoning hearing for their attempted development at the Plymouth Meeting Mall. The O'Brien one will go first and the pre one will be, will be after that. Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Moving down to Parks and Rec, our service and devotion monument, bricks and pavers announcement. Ms. Bandish?
The service and devotion monument. Individuals are able to purchase bricks and pavers to honor a loved one who has served. Three sizes are available, four by eight, twelve by twelve and a twenty four by twenty four. They start at seventy five dollars. The pavers have the option for a logo at an additional charge. Available logos are Army, Navy, Air Force Marines, Coast Guard and Plymouth Township Police, Plymouth Community Ambulance Association, Plymouth Fire Company and Harmonville Fire Company. We are still seeking monetary donations from businesses who are interested in becoming a supporter. In return for a donation, a laser etched granite plaque will be displayed prominently on the three tier donor wall. The purchase of bricks and pavers is ongoing and orders will be placed several times a year. For more information and for order forms, visit www plymouthcommunitycenter.org or just call the Greater Plymouth Community Center.
Thank you, Ms. Bandish. Next, we have our announcement for some vacancies on our citizen boards. The following citizen board positions are currently open. We have two positions that are open on our property maintenance code appeals board. We have a position open on the historical architectural review board. We have a position open on the human relations commission. And we have a position open on the environmental advisory board. All residents wishing to serve on these citizen boards are asked to submit their resume or a letter stating their interest to the township manager, seven hundred Belvoir Road, Plymouth Meeting, PA, one nine four six two or via email kwise at Plymouth Township dot org. At this time, we will ask for any audience participation, comments or questions from the audience. First hand up is Mr. Simpson.
Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Good to see everybody.
Happy New Year.
Unfortunately, in this type of atmosphere and not in person, but that's the new norm. So I have two questions, Ms. Monero.
Sure.
One is the Ridge Pike project that is was at the time funded and we were acquiring properties and was to be completed phase one, I believe, the end of this year or next year, and they haven't even started anything yet. So do we know where that's at and what's going on with that?
Mr. Manai, any, any updates on that? Or?
I see Karen has her hand up.
Karen?
Lonnie's muted again, but I mean, Shelley, are you referring to the reconstruction of Ridge Pike and our contribution to the jug handle removal?
That they were supposed to start at, at Armins and worked their way all the way through White Marsh Township, but they haven't started anything yet.
Yeah.
And that was supposed to be completed phase one, I think, this year or next year.
I know they planned to be under construction in twenty twenty two. They they, they had a difficult time getting getting all their appraisals done and their condemnations. But I do believe they're at the end of that process. The bridges over the turnpike and the railroad also are presenting some challenges. And I know Dave has been on a couple of calls with, with me and the people from the county regarding the area as that bridge comes as Ridge Pike is carried over. I think the turnpike, whichever is closer to Manor Avenue, where there's going to be a grade differential because the road has to be higher because the underpass has to be higher, you know. So there's been a lot of work ongoing and like they, we meet constantly about it regularly. And they hope to be, they hope to do the construction between Belvoir Road and I think even up to Chemical Road next year, twenty twenty two. Also, the township sanitary sewer is being all revised, replaced, and we're going to we're going to do that while they have the road open, so we won't have to bring the road back up to restoration, as well as aquas replacing their facilities, Pico, everything that's been under storm sewers, everything is getting redone. It's just a huge, huge project, but it is actively ongoing, working hard on it.
Okay, I just know it should have been almost completed part of it, and I just haven't started, so I was just curious what was going on with it, that's all.
Yeah.
The second question I had was, if I'm not mistaken, Verizon was trying to put a tower up at the township, and have that been completed yet? Because our Verizon service in this area is terrible.
Yeah, so the, I'm not sure if the plans ever came back from the recorder's office, but the township has signed their record plans, and I have a, you know, a note on my calendar, because I know that once they begin construction, that's when they start paying the rent. So I just move my sticker forward, dial it forward all the time, but I think that they have all the permits, and I mean, I'm not about permits, but they have all the approvals they need. And yes, it's still coming. I don't know why they're taking their time, but we're not holding them up. They've got final approval. It's all signed and sealed, so.
Okay.
It's really up to them when they want to start.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Monero. Appreciate it.
Shelley, might be time to switch over to AT&amp;T or T-Mobile or something.
Unfortunately, Verizon's the best nationwide, but right in this, right at my house is terrible. It's always been for years, and that's why I'm excited about it, but it's been taking a while for it to get done.
Same here, Shelley. Same here.
Anything else from the audience? And I'll just, I'll just take advantage, one more, another week here, an opportunity. I have several of my students from my US government class here tonight fulfilling the very last-minute option for an assignment to observe a government meeting, so I wanted to take a minute to thank them, even the ones who just jumped on here in the last five minutes. And again, I just think we all, as we think about all the things that we've been through in the last 10 months with this pandemic, I think we all owe a little tip of the cap to all of our high school and elementary and middle, and all the students who have had to go through a very difficult time and found ways to adapt and overcome with, you know, hopefully trying to learn and get ready for college, so I do thank them for jumping on tonight, and hopefully they'll have some questions to ask me in class tomorrow, but anything else from council or from the audience?
Well, we thank their teachers, too. A whole new way of interacting.
True, true. All right, if there's nothing else, we will adjourn for tonight. Thank you, everybody.